We'll call this meeting to order, starting with the determination of the course.
Mr. Chairman, we have seven members present and zero absent, so we have a form.
So rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Any commentary on the agenda? Any serious commentary? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve then.
I'll move approval on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Recognition and awards. We have a couple of newcomers to the district who we would like to welcome. So Todd, I'll turn it over to you to make introductions and if they're here, maybe I can come forward and just introduce themselves really quickly.
Sure, we have our brand-new curriculum director, Colleen Carden-Newton, maybe we might have to pronounce, of course. And then also Anne Marie Leland, if you guys want to just come up and introduce yourselves.
As Todd has said, I am Colleen Carden-Newton. I'm the Director of Teaching and Learning. This has been my second week and I have to admit, so far I've really enjoyed myself.
Anne Marie Leland, the new Community Education Director, and I have just had a great time the last couple of weeks getting to know several community members, the district staff, the program staff, and it's been a wonderful thing. Howard and I were at a meeting already with South Central College, so thank you.
Thank you. Anne Marie and Colleen, thank you very much for joining us here in Fairbrook. We hope you find your stay here as wonderful as we do. All right. Next on the agenda is a short presentation on adult basic education from Pat Weiser.
Good evening, everyone. I promised. I think some of you remember me from last year. I think I gave you a math test. Jerry, do you remember that? And I didn't make you take that. I was considering giving you the citizenship test that our ESL students have to take. That too I'm not going to do tonight. I value my job and I have students to go back to teach. I would like to give you some handouts, first of all. First of all, thank you for letting me come and speak with you. Adult Basic Ed is a small program in the district. We are part of community education. If you take a look at the green sheet that is making its way around, we have had four hundred, five hundred and forty-nine students this year. So perhaps not as small as it would have been. Two hundred and forty-seven GED students or skills brush-up. Within that skills brush-up, a lot of the students are coming back because of the economy. So they have lost their jobs. They are coming back to brush up on skills so that they can go back to school or learn a new trade. A lot of the employment agencies are now giving math tests. That is sending a lot of people my way. Fractions, decimals, percents are freaking people out. And so that is what we do. I teach the two hundred and forty-seven. We are lucky enough to have ten ESL teachers. And all of our teachers are licensed. So we have morning, afternoon, evening classes. I've spoken with a number of you. We, I am rather strict as far as our attendance policy. If somebody misses, they lose their spot because we do have a waiting list. And I think I spoke with you last year, every, at the end of this year, every student that had a good attendance policy got a ticket to come back to school in the fall. Those students that come back get to come back the day before the community registration time. Two years ago, we found that people were indeed forging tickets to our classes. So we knew we were a good game in town. However, every year we change the color just because of that. I think because we have managed enrollment and because we have, we have students sign a contract, they know that there are expectations and they take it seriously. Just because they're tired, they still come to work. It's quite amazing when you think of an adult who is probably working eight to ten to twelve hours and then they find time to come to our classes and learn English or learn math or study for their GED. It takes a lot of effort. It takes a lot, a lot of energy for them and I give them full credit. The next part that I've got down for you, this seems to always be the question that I get asked about when I've reported to the district before, so here you go. I broke it down this year contrary to other years. Last year I, I had the ethnicity broken down just by our total enrollment. And you, the board, asked for how it was broken down for ESL students versus GED skills brush-up students. You can take a look at the ethnicity breakdown that we have within our group. And below that, you can also see the age. Our, our students are, the broad range is nineteen to forty-four to forty-five years old. We don't, our goal is not to take students away from the high school. In fact, I usually start out the school year calling the counselors at the high school saying, please, do not send students that are having difficulty in high school to us. Because when they gave the test, the GED test, to students across the United States, only forty-two point seven percent of graduating seniors in the, in April and May could pass the test. We are doing students who are struggling no favor by sending them to GED. It's difficult and it will become more difficult. Right now, the GED does five tests. They're all timed. It's social studies, science, literature, writing, and math. The math is practically all word problems, as you guys might remember from last year when I handed out those sample worksheets. They're all timed. Students have about one and a half minutes to do a math problem. Not an easy thing to do. So my goal is not to take students from the high school. Please be aware of that. Our ESL students, a number of them have moved on from, there's a progression. We have different levels. We have morning, afternoon, evening classes. Afternoon, in all honesty, we're having a hard time filling. We have one class. It's not the most popular time for employed students and eighty percent of our students are at least unemployed in part-time jobs. So our goal is to use that afternoon on some computer learning and one English class. Then as far as funding goes, next question that always comes, no K-12, no O-1 funding comes for adult basic education. The funding for our adult basic education program comes state and federal funding. It's based on census. You can see the four components there. The number of LEP students in the district. The number of adults over twenty-one who don't have a diploma. And the number of learners, learning hours. When a student walks into our class, they have to sign in, so we have proof that they have been there. Every student that, then we also get federal funding. We have a couple, a few grants that are out there right now. We did a computer class. Again, we do Fast Track, which is a blend. That's, I think I've spoken with you all about that, where there is an adult basic ed instructor in the classroom with a South Central instructor. So far, we're doing Healthcare Academy Certified Nursing Assistant and medical abbreviations. And we found out by some chance that we got another one. We also do a computer class every summer. So that's kind of adult ed at a glance. Every student that walks into our program is tested whether they're ESL or GED or skills brush-up. After thirty-five to forty hours of instruction, we test them again. And we get a report card from the State Department. And we have mapped and exceeded every level that the state has asked. We are running classes right now. I will be teaching one last medical Healthcare Academy class and then we will start up Full Blast in September. The students with the tickets will come back one day. We'll have a list to make sure nobody's counterfeiting the tickets. And then we will have a general registration class the next day. And then we test the students so that they are placed at the appropriate level. Do you have any questions for me?
Can you talk about your list a little bit, how long it is and whether it's, what's all the change over time?
Right now, I'm trying to think, in September, I think of last year, we had close to forty on our waiting list. I won't take a waiting list on GED because I figure, I'm a teacher, I'm old, I better be able to handle a huge, a large number of students. But there, there is a certain number that is good for doing appropriate ESL instruction. You can't have twenty people in a class because every ESL class should have listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And if you've got twenty to twenty-five students, the teacher's not able to hear, the students are not able to do the practicing. We, we've been lucky in that we do use volunteers from St. Olaf's, so that helps us a lot one day a week for the conversation circles. But typically, we're looking at between twenty-five to forty people on a waiting list. What happens is, once a month, I go through the sign-in sheets, we print them out, put it, input in to the computer system. If anybody does not have good attendance, their name is removed from the sign-in sheet. At which point, if all of a sudden I see a sign, somebody signing in and their name isn't there, I know that they're there and they haven't had good attendance. I always check with the teachers, because the teachers will know if somebody's been in the hospital or yet some huge emergency. But those students are then put on the bottom of our waiting list. They have to wait to get back in.
So do I understand your corollary that there is no waiting list for GED?
No.
But there is a waiting list for ESL?
Yes, sir.
And has that changed much in the last two or three years? The numbers?
No. No, and I don't anticipate it to change. I think the numbers will be there. I'm working with some, with a couple of people at Vincent DePaul who are doing some volunteer. I've also gotten Rosetta Stone. We have, I, we are part of a larger consortium now. And so we've got slots, so when people come in, at least I've got some, someplace to go for them. And that is, they, we can put them on Rosetta Stone, which is an English language learning computer program, until we can fit them into a class, because you don't want to just put them out on the streets when they're wanting to be there.
So how do our numbers of ESL this year compare to last year or two years ago?
They're increased. They're increased. I don't have the numbers. I can certainly get back to you on those. I would guess our increase, our, our numbers have increased fifty to sixty. And our GED has increased another fifty to sixty. GED will increase even more because the GED test is changing. And as of January of 2014, the whole test will be changed and anybody who has passed any of those other ones, they won't be any good. So I, the last type, what has happened in the past with GED is every ten years about, they change the GED test and all of a sudden we get this huge onslaught of people coming in because they want to finish. I'm anticipating that will happen too. So I'm expecting this to get larger. I've spoken with some folks and we're anticipating more Somali families moving to the community. We've got more of our Latino community members that are staying instead of coming and going back. And the GED is necessary for the economy.
Thank you. So Pat, if I understood you right, anybody who comes in with an ESL need has some route at this point. It may just be Rosetta Stone, but there's, there's always some programming available for them?
There will be. There will be. When we get our new space.
We're getting a little crunch, so we're looking for some additional space that we can lease over at Town Square or at Centwood South Central.
I was, I was just wondering if we have a gauge on what the need is. I mean, you, I think you said a number like forty for the waiting list or something like that, but...
By September, I would anticipate the minimum will be forty on the ESL, yes.
Because, but...
That's been typical, forty to sixty.
Are there a good number of people who you think might not be putting their name on a waiting list? Because, you know, when I think of a waiting list for my class, after three or four, nobody adds their name because they're not getting into my class.
No, what happens is people come into our center and they say, do you have English classes? And we say, no openings now, but let us take your name. So we've got somebody at the front desk and so that is, that's...
That's good to know.
We try to capture them.
So, so that number of forty or whatever the exact number is, is probably a decent measure of what the demand is beyond what we're offering at this point.
Right, right.
And so it's not, I was just, I was, I was wondering if there might be a need for twice as many classes as we have, but it, it doesn't sound like it. It sounds like we're...
I don't think so. I think I'm also working with South Central and they are looking at adding an academic English program for the higher levels. And that would help us because then we could focus on those students that are at the lower level. And so I'm continuing those discussions with the Director of Admissions at South Central. And we continue to work with that.
Any other questions for Pat? Hearing none. Pat, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The chair forgives you. All right, next on the agenda is community comment time. This is a time for any members of the community with concerns on any topic to come forward and address the board. There's a three-minute limit per speaker and a fifteen-minute limit per topic. Are there any members of the community tonight who would like to come forward? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Next up is our consent agenda. Any motions to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the second? All right, hearing none. Mr. Clerk, if you...
Can I just ask one question?
Please, please do.
It's on the minutes. I'm sorry to do this, but is everybody, I'm looking at item eight B. The levy discussion, motion by Wolf, second by Bodie, to approve operating levy in the amount of six hundred dollars as presented and with no guarantee that six point oh FTE will be supported. Is that, is everybody comfortable with that language about the six point oh will be supported?
Well, can I, can I just ask, I think that's a valid question, but before we even get started on it, we should probably remove it from the consent agenda and then address it separately.
Okay.
I think even if we're just going to ask questions about it, I don't think it'll take very long, but let's make sure we follow the rules. So let's remove that item, just so we can see if, we can just change this question. So the, the minutes will be removed from the consent agenda? Any items, other items to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, so we'll be acting on the consent agenda minus the, the minutes, so that we can address James's question. So, Mr. Clerk, if you would please do a roll call on the consent agenda.
James Wolf?
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Jason Engberg?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Tom Casper?
Aye.
And I'll go to aye, seven to zero, passes.
Okay, so back to the minutes. James, show me exactly where you were referring to. I think I, is that item eight?
On the first page of the minutes, eight B, item ten, B.
B, eight B, ten B, I think is what that is. Okay. Motion by Wolf, second by Bodie.
I know specifically I said that we didn't want to be wedded to the six point oh because it might be five point oh. So, but I don't know if for sure this says that with no guarantee that the six point oh FTE will be supported. I, I think the final number of new positions will ultimately be six, I think. Rather than with no guarantee that the six point oh will be supported. That's, I'm not sure what that means. I just want to be clear because if they pass the levy and they say, well, you said you were going to hire six new people and we can't hire six new people. If that's what this says, that if everybody is clear on that, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I think that's what it says to me.
That's why I read it, James.
Okay.
Just another clarification. Should that not state six hundred dollars per pupil unit?
Uh, yes.
Rather than six hundred dollars?
It should, that's correct.
Oh, that's what I meant to bring up on.
Any other comments on the second? Or any other item with like three minutes?
I, I think I'm comfortable with, as it was stated, I recall a discussion that the six hundred dollar amount will provide some level over strictly sustaining what we currently have. And that part of the process would be to determine how that money might be utilized, should it pass. And it could, could be FTEs, it could be whatever, but there, I don't, there was a discussion related to some specific positions. And I, my understanding of it was that we were going to have further discussion about how any available monies might be allocated.
Yeah, I think my understanding agrees with your Tom, yours Tom's. We had those discussions and I think they were important, but I think there was also a realization that we're, by trying to decide exactly what those FTE would be, we'd be making a decision about a budget that won't even be before us for at least a year. So difficult to make the final decisions at this time. Maybe some further discussion there. But I, but I agree with exactly what you've said, Tom. I think there's an idea there that there's, there's something in addition and that amount, I think, is estimated to be about six FTE. But we want to be careful about not promising something and having a change by a little bit.
Thank you.
I think that's what James was going for. Does that help? All right, any other questions or comments on the minutes? All right, hearing none. I will entertain a motion to approve.
I will move to approve the minutes as amended.
It's second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes with the addition of an item eight B, ten B, to make sure that it says the amount of six hundred dollars per pupil unit. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There is no report from the Curriculum Committee this evening for policy. There is no report. We do have some items in front of us tonight that we, are, are back in front of us for a second reading. Those items are policy five thirteen, student promotion retention, and, let's see here, it doesn't show up on the screen. Student promotion, retention, and program design. Policy five oh four, student dress and appearance. Policy five eighteen, DNR and DNI orders. Policy five oh nine, enrollment of non-resident students. And policy five nineteen, interviews of students by outside agencies. So these have been in front of us before for our first reading. Any questions or comments on any of them?
Jason, I like the, on policy five thirteen, student promotion. I think it was a practice in the district of what they call social promotion. Is that still happening within this district?
You know, the, the promotions, particularly probably talking about mainly kindergarten is where a lot of that happens, is there's typically the parent will meet with the teacher and the principal and they'll make a decision whether or not to promote or retain that particular student. So in its truest sense, I don't know if social promotion is within the school district, but certainly if you define it, social promotion means at times the student is not at their academic level, but they're going to be promoted socially and that happens in the school. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, the way I understand it, they promote them to keep along with their class, more of a social thing rather than academic?
Yeah, and it's really, it's a chance for the parents and the principal and the teachers to meet because sometimes students aren't quite academically ready at that early of an age and then they eventually catch up, so they try to make a decision at that time. At the high school level, if, if a student fails a class and they don't have enough credits, they have to go back and they have to either take an online course to regain that class or they have to repeat the class over again. So the, the, the carney credits that students are required to have, they have to take those.
We're talking, I'm talking basically maybe elementary, maybe up to sixth grade with that. Plus, it says for here, under B, retention, the superintendent's decision is, shall be final.
Right.
I, I do, I do have a problem with that. Is that, where's the parents? I mean, it's, if they say, hold my student back at third grade and saying that, you know, he's not, he or she is not ready for third, fourth grade. Whose decision is that?
Well, and I think that the only reason why it's in there is that if it gets to be a controversial decision, somebody's got to make a decision. And normally, it's quite honestly, it's always the superintendent with the academic piece. somebody's gotta make a decision, and normally, it's, quite honestly, it's always the superintendent with the academic piece. I'm not sure what other superintendent's philosophy is, but the parents have quite a bit of clout when they're making a decision for their students to either be retained or advanced.
I certainly don't read this as saying that parents don't play a role in this. But, uh, but that if, if for some reason, you would hope that this is a rare case, I haven't heard of one since I've been in the district, where there's a disagreement between staff, that somebody has to make that final call, and I think you want that to be the person that we put in charge of the district.
Question, I, I don't see it in the policy, but for future reference, I think there should be some clause in here on dispute resolution when that very specific thing comes up. I agree with you, Richard, that, uh, I, no way, and I don't think it does, but I would hate to think they were minimizing parental involvement and parental decision. We want parents participating, engaged in their students' educational program and follow it. If they feel it's in the best interest of their child to be retained, we're saying no with the school district. There has to be some dispute resolution process set up to address that.
And I don't, I don't think that, I mean, if it makes you more comfortable, we can pull that off and, and rework that. Because I, I, I think it's, in my estimation, through my education experience, it's been the, parents have had a, a very big influence on whether their students are being retained or moved ahead, so. But we'd be more than willing to work on it more too, it's not something that is-
To me, it should be parents and our, our teaching teams, because those are the ones that work with the students is, is that teacher, maybe not the same teacher, when, I mean, basically the parents and teachers, then it says, well, then it's the superintendent. Well, may not even know the ki- the child at all.
The other piece is, if you're more comfortable with it, we could, I know that the principals have a procedure, particularly the elementary procedure, the elementary principals have a procedure by how they make those decisions for that. That might be valuable before you make a decision on this policy too.
I would suggest, Richard, I, I know what you're saying, and I understand it. I'm not suggesting that we table a policy, but a nice report from the principals would be nice, uh, how they do dispute resolution when it comes to that.
There is in the old policy, it talks about that, an appeal to the superintendent schools as an option for parents not agreeing with the decision. So it, it goes into much more detail.
I think the, it's kind of the buck stops here and somebody's gotta make a decision if it gets to be, and that's the only reason. I, I would rather have that resolution be decided at the level of the principal, the teacher, and the, and the parent. But I, I suppose you have to put something in there, if there's not gonna be any resolve, somebody's gotta make a decision.
But that's awful strong, Michelle, like, even that last sentence, under paragraph B, I mean, you know, super, you know, it's just like-
Cause you could offend the principals and, and the teachers, I suppose, too. If I make a decision to go along with the parents, then I get the principals and the teachers mad at me.
Then the other-
And likewise, if I make a decision on behalf of the principal and the teachers, then I get the parents mad at me. But I, I don't know if there's anybody else that can make that decision, if it gets to the point where nobody's gonna do it.
That's the problem. Somebody, the buck has to stop somewhere, and I think in our base, it's with our superintendent. And this is Minnesota School Board Association language.
Yep.
And I think in their wisdom, they probably have run into the problems with it associated more than we have, so.
Yep, and if you're not happy with my decision, then that, I guess that puts me on the bottom, so, yep. But I'll bring some more information on how the procedures, that's probably a good question, you might should review that.
And also review that, that, well, if we can, you know, the last statement, it's, it's so strong that you have the final say.
Do you have suggestions on how you'd re-
Well, I, I, in, in my opinion, the parents should have the final say, that's, that's where I'm coming from. Cause I've had experience in that.
Okay, you're, you're going up a dangerous road there.
Yeah, I don't think so. I would disagree on that one. So, we have, uh, five policies in front of us, do we want to act on these as a group or individually? Chair will entertain a motion, uh, I would suggest we act on these, uh, together as one, uh, but Chair will entertain-
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Alright, so, we have a motion to adopt, uh, each of the policies listed, policy five thirteen, oh, five oh four, five eighteen, five oh nine, and policy five nineteen. Any further discussion on these policies?
A second.
Thank you. Mister Clerk, earning your wages again, appreciate it. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on any of these items? Okay, hearing none, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
No. Let's do- It's all related to five thirteen, the rest is-
That's understood, understood. Let's, uh, let's do a roll call then, uh, Mister Clerk.
James Wolf.
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
No.
Jason Ingraham.
Aye.
Deb Davis.
Aye.
Tom Casper.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, Mister Chairman, the fastest, six to one.
Okay, um, in light of the fact that we've just, uh, added some policies, uh, to our policy manual, they, uh, before, so there are a number of policies, uh, that should be rescinded. These are policies six oh five point five, student promotion and retention. Policy five oh two point nine, dress code. Policy five oh four point six, do not resuscitate or policy. Policy five oh one point zero, enrollment of non-resident students. Policy five oh two point eight, student interviews, uh, at school by law enforcement officers. Uh, the Chair will entertain a motion to rescind, uh, all of these po- policies.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to rescind each of the policies, as I, uh, just mentioned. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
No. All related to six oh five point five.
Sure, um, so let's, uh, Mister Clerk, again, if you would do a roll call.
James Wolf.
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
No.
Jason Ingraham.
Aye.
Deb Davis.
Aye.
Tom Casper.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, and Mister Chairman, six to one.
Alright, motion carries. Uh, item eight, finance. There's a, Finance Committee did not meet this month, um, so there's no report from the Finance Committee. But we do have a number of items to act on. So, uh, the long-range capital facilities, uh, plan. Kevin, I'm assuming you're gonna come forward and, and walk us through this?
Yes, thank you, good evening. Hello? You all have the package ready, it's our long-range capital. Actually, it's gone under many different names over the year, not the last couple of years, but, the strategic facilities, facilities plan, this will be here in two thousand twelve thirteen. Um, I'll just briefly go through it, if you ask questions as we go through it, I do, I'm one of those that don't like going through a page, a page para- paragraph, but, just basic introduction, table of contents on page three. Next page, basically talks about on page four, school facilities and academic out- outcomes. Basically giving reference to how important school facilities, well-maintained school facilities are to the classroom, grades, um, and then also out, uh, how kids do in school and how our staff performs. The reason for comprehensive facility planning on the next page, on page five, talks about being proactive, being efficient, data collection, politically expedient, um, as a communication tool, professionalism, and provides peace of mind with things we take care of. Next page introduces on page seven, your, um, the district's mission statement, also business. That takes up to several next pages, and we worked hard on putting that all together, so that is included in the strategic facilities plan. On up to page eleven, um, is normal view on district administration or the school board. Next page is district boundaries, as part of Rice County, and these maps are to fit into a map by eleven, but if you ever wanna see these, these are on Department of Education's website. Um, then our school boundaries, as far as the elementarys are concerned, the boundaries of the three elementarys. Next page, snapshot time on demographics, our student counts, K through twelve, or pre-K through twelve. That data is put into this one, um, as of March first, two thousand twelve. Next page, page fifteen, talks about the, uh, district site inventory, basically the buildings, fiscal address, and acres. You'll notice that we have twelve different sites totaling two hundred and sixteen point six six acres. We wear that, but, then our district building inventory, on the next page, on page sixteen.
We're going back, what's that nineteen acre parcel?
Nineteen acre par- parcel? It's all on Western Avenue, tucked in, it goes all the way out to Interstate thirty-five W. It's, um, to the north, called North of Western Avenue.
It's between the golf course and the thirty-five, isn't it?
Yeah, it's farther back.
Swampland.
Swamp, yeah, Swampland.
I thought we sold that.
Nope, we sold the sixty acres that we had farther in for, um-
What's that about the soccer?
Pardon?
The soccer with the switch, the land switch?
That was the sixty acre parcel, the nineteen didn't settle that, or part of the sixty and-
Is there any value to that nineteen?
Depends on who you are. It's unbuildable, it's all considered in the link, in a, I can't remember the term, the company uses for-
Wetland.
Floodland, yeah.
Wetland.
Yep, it's wetland. To me, a developer, I think, would be interested in it to claim that as part of their wetland, and they could do, maybe a little bit of swapping on the edges for certain things, but-
It's not buildable.
It's not buildable, by all means, no. School at one time had interest in using it as a nature center. So there's value there if the district wants to have a nineteen acre offsite nature area, do some work out there. So, it's nineteen acres and we own it, so it's our inventory.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next page is our building, district building inventory, talks, uh, shows you all the buildings and square footages and the additions. See the high school there, it's nineteen fifty, one hundred twenty-nine thousand square feet. Then totals up the different ages and then the total square footage of each building. District lease spaces, there's five different spaces around town. On page seventeen, page eighteen, divisional organization, um, where finance and operations oversees the buildings, grounds, transportation, food and nutrition, and business ops, and a brief description. Then the next page, page nineteen, talks about buildings, grounds, department information. Mission statement of the buildings, grounds department, also our core values, department objectives, and our goals for two thousand twelve and thirteen. Next page on twenty, talks about our department organization. Buildings, grounds department oversees asset management, space management, operation management, HR, finance and budgeting, and project man- project management, and below a brief description on each one of those categories. Next page, page twenty-one, talks about personnel in the buildings, grounds department. Page twenty-two, employee standards for our department.
Kevin, excuse me, just a second. Uh, on page twenty-one, where you're talking about, uh, the personnel, are the head custodians of the buildings directly accountable to you and not to the principals?
You are correct. It's, to me, it's kind of a gray area, they're, they're directly accountable to both. I supervise my discipline, the principal does deal directly with the head custodians, but if there are disciplinary issues in the hiring and firing of the head custodian, it goes through me.
We'll have a discussion on that sometime.
Okay. It's worked well, the years I've been here with principals, if they have any concerns, they, they definitely are not afraid to talk and discuss those issues. Day to day operations, they, they contact them directly instead of me. They discuss all the issues with them, and gets to the next level that comes to me, but, yes.
Talk about it at some time.
Not a problem. Employee standards, page twenty-two, standards we hold our schools and department accountable for. Then it talks about department finances, where we're getting our money from, different funds, general fund. We deal with that a lot, operating capital, procurement, associate, construction, bonds, all of that. Next page, capital planning and budgeting, talks about our capital facilities program. How we need to have a budget on our, and capital budgets are larger issues than our, than our, for our facilities to be taken care of. Next page, health safety, pardon, education and health safety program, which all schools in state are part of. These are some of the programs that, uh, we manage under that category. Page twenty-six talks about our workflow process, our computerized maintenance management system, or else our work order system. It's through school due, I'll be vetted for several years, the, uh, technology department also uses the same work order program. That's there. Next page, emergency procedures, um, there's just a sample map of one of our schools and things we do with, um, some of our computer programs that we have in the district, this one is emergency preparedness, basically showing you the arrows on a map of a school on how to exit the building during a fire. Next one, space management, another way I use that program, um, where we can look at a building and color code them as far as how the space is being used, uh, space asset or management, how you use the spaces, uh, that's colored in there, that's Roosevelt School, fourth grade, second grade. Sometimes just, instead of having a chart form, a program like this where you can show it in different colors and that really helps people pick it up really quick. Next talks about department technologies on page twenty-nine. Some of the computer programs we use are building automation system, um, that handles our HVAC pro- or ventilation programs. The next one, they talked briefly a little bit ago about our, um, school due, our work order program. Graspable fire alarm systems, security cameras and badging, hard access to get into the buildings and that. Next one, page thirty-one, talks about custodian cleaning and housekeeping. The old days, we just assigned people, now it's a little more computerized, they've basically gone through, use a program called CCAP. It's a cleaning cost analysis program, one of our vendors has it, uh, we get, we get to use since we use their program to use them. Basically looks at every building, every square foot in the district, and looks at a classroom, we count from the garbage cans, we can look at the, what level of cleanliness we need in those rooms, and puts it all in a computer database that is run nationally, and it'll tell you how many custodians, how much cleaning help you really need. Or, if you go the other way, you tell them you have so many, then we need to start figuring out how we assign our staff most effectively using them to even out the workload with most of our staff. Staff responsibilities, not only do our custodians, we ask all staff in the, in the district to help out, but there's just filling out a work order if they have a problem, instead of just telling you to walk it down the hallway or that. Minimizing food and beverages in the classroom, of course, helps a lot in our cleaning. And if there's little things they can do, help recycling and that, those type of things. Maintenance, go back to our program and tracking our work orders and how to do them. Corrective maintenance, fixing something that's already broke, preventive maintenance, fixing things before they break. Scheduled maintenance, um, something like filter changes, um, that need to be done in our air handlers a couple times a year. Let me talk about how many maintenance staff, I do have two full-time devoted to maintenance in the district. Next talks about the grounds we have in the district, um, two hundred and sixteen point five six acres that we handled, mold. List all the areas and then some of the things like, they have light features in the other, other areas like playgrounds and signs. Page thirty-six, um, same program on the maps, it just throws maps on our sites as far as the building sites and what's all included, whether it's ball fields or track, hard stuff, soft skate. Staff trainings on page thirty-seven, on the trainings that we do with our staff, our custodian staff, whether it's lockout, tag, or hoshum type programs, or EPA programs that our custodian staff needs to do. Then one of the other things, sustainability initiatives, things we do, it's part of his recycling program, making sure we do recycle, it needs to be recycled. Utility bill tracking, uh, we both, we enter all our data on a program that the state runs, MB three it's called, a benchmarking site for the state. Back in the days of, let's see, what governor, Jesse Ventura got that started. Back then, he said all public sites, whether it's the Capitol, whether it's his residence, or public schools will have this done by a certain year. So we've been benchmarking for many years. Some of the grants you ask for, um, energy conservation items these days, request to see your B three and make sure you are doing that. So it's very important for equipment updates, building accessibility, some of the initiatives. Then we get into the appendixes, appendix A talks about the categories in which we put together a chart on some of the needs from handicap accessibility, doors, electrical, hard skate, or ventilation, cleaning, on to page forty-two, all the way down to windows. Page forty-three is a ten-year forecast out there on some of your larger capital needs and all the programs that was in appendix A from, like I said, ADA, available windows, based out of ten years, it's spread out there. So you look at the bottom right-hand corner, everybody usually lands at the bottom right right away, it's about twelve million dollars worth of capital needs in the next ten years for the district. Then the last page is your health safety, approved projects, amounts every year, we range- Then the last page is your health safety approved projects amounts every year, we range roughly two hundred to three hundred thousand a year in health and safety. This is the, the annual health safety budget that you do approve. With that, that's a brief discussion.
Kevin, then.
Facility plan, yes.
Help me again on this ten-year capital budget.
Yes.
Twenty sixteen and seventeen, you got kind of a spike there. And it looks like it's doors, door hardware jumps way up. You know what that is?
You know, the spreadsheet that I had to put together, this one is, is many pages long, right now, off the cuff and all you know. I have to go back and research it.
And then you've got renovations, twenty thirteen through twenty seventeen, and then there are none for the next four.
Right. When I put together this list, I asked all the principals to give me their input, I asked staff, I asked custodians. I went around and got everybody's ideas on if you could have certain, you know, if money's not an object, you know, tell me some things and I'll sort some of this stuff out that just away in the world is ever going to happen. But then I did throw some in that do make sense. And I'm, you know, if I'm not prepared tonight to open this chart line by line and all the items together, I can, you know, bring that back for another discussion.
Sure.
Fine. This was curious about it.
So Kevin, this is not really a real list.
It is, it is a real list, there's items, you know, somewhere where we passed the bond project, that's sixty-five projects. There is a list here by every building for ten years on every item here.
Okay, I know when we passed the bond, there was fifteen million, but you had a list of thirty million dollars. Now, there was a reason to put that fifteen million, the other fifteen, is that part of this?
This is.
This is.
I have it at twelve right now. I could run it up to fifteen, I could run it up to thirty.
Also, that, this is that.
This is part of that, you know, you asked for that, I don't know, some time ago, we discussed it at length and.
Yeah.
Yep, this is part of that total thirty that we have in our crystal ball of that thing.
Now, do you have enough for each year, can you do this stuff?
Well, that is yet to be determined on a lot of things, no, current funding sources, no. There are avenues, I mean, there's always grants to go after and, and different funding sources, I mean. Depends on how much capital I get every year and how far we go, how far we push the painting program, I pushed the painting program. You know, if you read back and you're talks about painting, well, you might not paint a gym every twenty, twenty-five years and you maybe need to push the hallways where more people are and they get a little more need for painting, you might push those up every five years, so, I mean, it, basically, the painting program as one example for this is, we're going to paint the entire district in ten years and we'll average out the costs over the ten years. That's why you see that number pretty stagnant across the way. I didn't go out and say, well, room six is getting painted this year, room seven next year, room eight next year. I didn't go to that one for the painting one. That one, I'm pretty much just amortized it over the ten years. We have had a hardcore painting program for many, many years.
The ten year, do you anticipate asking for a levy?
Do I anticipate asking for another levy in ten years? The stuff we're doing now is going to last quite a while and included in here, like your parking lots, we're upgrading, putting in new asphalt areas. The seal coating to maintain those is included in this program, so we are maintaining the things we have. Air hailing's equipment, rated life is twenty-five, forty years. So I mean, in ten years, no, in twenty-five years, yeah. Tuck point, you really should go after that pretty good every fifteen years. The cogs only really supposed to last around ten or fifteen years in your joints, so you can pull it out and recock them. That's a little beyond the scope of this, because we're doing all of that this year. So in ten years, you know, we'll be looking at some of the, you know, the tuck point issues again, that we need to go through another cycle of that. You know, well, in fifteen years, we'll be looking at that. Roofing wise, we've got those well handled, you know, we won't be looking for that in my term here. I don't think you're going to be on the board another twenty, thirty years, but maybe you are, I don't know.
So, so ten years, we're looking good?
Yeah, and I mean, we, we have this in front of us to try to figure out, you know, how much this is set in stone, are the buildings going to fall, no, they are going to fall down. You know, we handled some of the really big ticket items with that bond and really got our buildings in good shape. This is part of where do you, as a board, where does this community want to see the school district going? Where in the pecking order of, boy, they look great and it's the best things in sliced bread and they're shiny and looks, everything looks great and it's you know, the best around, or, you know, down here, we're, oh man, we're theirs. We, our schools are falling out, we don't want to be down here, I don't want to be down there. Money dictates a lot of that, but where do we want to be, somewhere in between? And that's part of how this program is put together and then the input, of course, we use the board and the community. Where do they, where do you want to see the schools looking? Where do you want to see them in that grade from A F, you want us to be average, you want us to be C, you want us to be B, A minus, A? You know, money's going to dictate that, but then also, you know, pressure from the community, pressure from you as, as a board, where do you want to see your community, where are you? So, you know, I know you put up that beautiful science complex, you know, and then it's a college and you're trying to get people there, so you really, you know, you're selling that to them. But where do, where do you want to sell your school to the community, to the public, as they drive through the community? You want to be proud of it, so you get more students to come here. We want to, everyone to be proud of our schools, so. Part of that's all embedded in here, where do you want to go?
Jerry, you had a question?
Thanks, Jason, going back to that spreadsheet again, Kevin.
Yes.
So what you're saying is that you have some document, whether it's from the principals, yourself, or some kind of an assessment instrument that validates each of these figures in here.
Yes.
Because there are some that have a significant jump and it's, it's how we pointed out. Sometime, for information purposes, be nice to know what, what that document is and how that was arrived at.
For this spreadsheet, there is one that correlates for every building. So, and then we put all those together to come back together to this one, so it's, it's another quite thick.
You know, for example, site work, you go from thirty-three thousand and.